The Hingham School Committee meeting of July 25th at 7:00 PM. We are meeting at Central North Meeting Room as the school department conference room is under construction right now. We are also attempting to provide remote access to this meeting. It is broadcasting live on Harbor Media, Public Channel Comcast 1072 and Verizon 2131. We are also attempting to livestream on YouTube as we have been doing for the past few months, but we are having some technical difficulties, so apologies to anyone who is trying to log in from home. If you are, we also have two members, Ness Corenti and Ally Anderson, who are participating remotely. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communication during the meeting may be and are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of this meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair will inform other participants of the recording. Anyone else recording? Okay. All right. Again, we're also going on YouTube if we do get that. The protocols for YouTube participation. All right, we are called to order, and the first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have a couple of minutes to approve. Does someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 21st, 2022.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ness and Ally? Both ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, those are approved. Item 2.2. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 22nd, 2022, which was a joint meeting with the Select Board, Advisor Committee and Personnel Board.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and 2.3?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 14th, 2022.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Ness and Ally, you're both ayes? Great.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item number three on the agenda is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments on agenda items as they are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of each meeting for questions, comments that fall under the purview of the school committee but not on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the Chair. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must again relate to topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. As established by national law, the responsibility of the school committee is to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interest of others. Public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee, and the school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. In addition to this public comment period, the school committee practice is to provide time for questions and comments from the public on new business items and unfinished business items on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments for public comment? All right. Number four then, move on to Dr. Adams' first superintendent's report.
Thank you. I like to say recently that I have a lot of firsts, so this is my first school committee, a lot of first days of school, which means that I have little butterflies and anxiety every night beforehand, but I am glad to be here. So I'm going to start the superintendent's report with a short presentation on my entry plan, which was part of the packet. We have posted it on the website and plan to send it out this evening to families. It'll also include a short, three-minute video, sort of highlighting some components of it. So just briefly, a little bit on the purpose of an entry plan, it's to sort of develop an outline of my activities, both as I've transitioned into the role as the superintendent in Hingham and some activities moving forward. It allows me to take some time to complete an in-depth review of the district and create a plan moving forward. The goals of the entry plan are five. One, governance, to really develop a strong working relationship between myself and the school committee. Second, community, to gain a deeper understanding of the Hingham Public Schools and its stakeholders, and really develop some strong relationships with all of them. Communications, to develop a system and structure for clear and consistent communication with all stakeholders. Return our focus to teaching and learning and work on assessing our current status of teaching and learning academics, as well as a focus on the social-emotional well-being of our students. And culture, all of this is based upon creating a strong foundation for collaborative, student-centered school climate that really highlights the positive contributions and learning environments that we can create for our students and staff. A little bit about my values that are sort of intertwined in and will move me moving forward, my core beliefs. Our collective responsibility is to the education of all of our students and every single student in our care. The basis for our work are strong, caring relationships with our stakeholders. The education of our young people are really centered on really focusing on the whole child, really thinking about how we create innovative, creative, resilient, inclusive, and civically-minded citizens among our students. Collaboration and collective effort is really going to ensure our success. I talked, the leadership team met last week, and we talked a lot about collective effort. It is the little contributions of all of us that collectively will have a great impact and really support the learning of our students and the creation of dynamic environments for our staff as well. And as well as, in these times, we've learned the importance of really strengthening and a sense of belonging, both among our students and educators and leaders, and we do so by honoring the diversity of our community and the backgrounds of all. A timeline, this is a proposed timeline in the first phase, which really began with my entry and working with the interim superintendent, Dr. Maestris, in February through June. I was privileged to spend about 15 days, full days, in the district as well as other remote meetings. And then, as well as the strategic planning process, which is on the agenda a little later, it really allowed me to really look at a variety of documents and resources to really gain a deep understanding of the district, to synthesize and energize, that's the phase that I'm in right now, and that's to really develop and start to work with folks around in the, both teacher and school leaders and community leaders, to really collect and organize the information I've collected so far, and in January, come back with an entry plan. Again, in that first phase, some of the things that I've done is meet with key stakeholders, and I've really focused, sometimes entry plans have a long list of questions, I find it better to start with four key questions and engage in a conversation with folks. Again, the strategic planning really allowed me to review lots of documents and do a comprehensive review of documents in the district that can inform my understanding of Hingham. Some additional activities, the hiring process of two principals and our Director of Fine Arts have allowed me to gain a deep and work really closely with folks on the hiring process and gain an understanding of those communities. Again, participating in strategic planning. Some initial reflections, we have, there's a strong, one of the greatest strengths of this community is its educators, and our educators have a very strong commitment to the schools and love students and families and care very deeply. There's a strong desire as well in the community for our schools to do well, and strong support for the schools. Those are great strengths for us to build upon. There is also a strong desire in the community to look forward, to really develop an innovative learning environment for all of our students, as well as commitment to thinking about and developing a stronger definition of what equity and inclusion looks like in Hingham. Some opportunities for growth, we're developing a clear and consistent structure for communication, really returning back to our curriculum and our teaching and learning and really thinking about how are we preparing our young people to be future-ready, supporting our leadership team around the district's vision, mission, and really thinking about strategic planning, developing clear, consistent procedure structures for the financial needs of the district as well as facilities, and investing again in our staff and our leaders with professional development that allow us to develop that environment that allow our students to be future-ready. So I'm in this phase right now, is really starting now to do the work with our leadership team, and then as we roll into September with our teacher leaders and our teachers. It began last week with planning and implementing a three-day retreat with our leadership team, which allowed us to dig into the strategic plan, the draft of the strategic plan, and start to plan forward. It will also mean setting goals with leaders as part of their evaluations, setting and looking at school improvement plans and department goals as well, thinking about what is our professional development structure going to be for the coming year, as well as curriculum needs, and how do we start to put pieces into practice. And in the first, last stage would really be to think about an entry plan that really documents all that I've learned. I think the paragraph about a path forward, I think, is important, to really acknowledge how challenging the last two and a half years has been for our community. At the same time, we've really learned a lot about ourselves and our families and ourselves and our profession, to really, we've developed skills that we never knew we could develop around resiliency and technology and problem-solving. We've redesigned school multiple times, and it's really been a testament to this community that you did so, and we can really harness the skills that we've developed to help us move forward, and really think about what is it, what do we want for our children that allows them to be future-ready for the future. So I am hopeful that it also seems as a way to move forward, as well as the strategic plan that we'll discuss a little later.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate this greatly. Formatting is fantastic. This is a great roadmap for the past six months that you've been really working for the district or working with the district, as well as the next many, many years to come. Anyone else on the committee have any questions or comments from, to Dr. Adams about the plan? Tim?
I think it's great. I think one of the benefits of it is I think there's a perception that you started working here this month, and clearly you haven't, so I'd appreciate that. I know you have been meeting, having personal interactions with students, and since this is sort of a year about centering students, I was wondering if, I don't know if you're meeting with the Student Advisory Council or any, if there is any sort of student contact or?
Not yet. I think the interactions I've had with students have been through the hiring process, so that's something I have yet still to establish, but extremely important, so I look forward to that. It's hard in the summer.
Yes, of course.
Because they're off doing summer.
Let's change that from hard to impossible.
Yes. So I'm looking forward to doing that in September.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Because I know that's a part of your plan, I just wanted to make sure that was highlighted.
And I think also valuing the voice of educators, I think also because it's summer, it's been challenged, folks are, it's been a challenging year, and folks need to take a break in time, and so making space for that also for educators. I was able to visit the ESY today and see kids and talk to some of the staff over at East and was over at the middle school a couple weeks ago, and so it's an opportunity to just meet people and see and hear from them a bit, so I look forward to doing more of that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, I'm really excited with the structure and comprehensiveness of this plan. Like this, I echo Tim's comment that yes, you've been working, you know, you've been working here for five months, but you also were working your full-time job, and already in mid-July to have this laid out, just, I'm really excited about it.
Ness or Ally, anything?
I just, yeah, Matt and Tim, I think we talked what I was going to say. I appreciate all the work that you've done, you know, you've had to balance one and a half jobs, trying to get all of this done and understand our district, so I greatly appreciate your work. I agree with your initial assessment that we have a strong sense of pride in our schools, we're a community that really values education, and I think we have a strong system, but also recognize that we have work to do, so I'm really grateful for the time that you've spent getting up to speed. And I would just echo, if you could have the one-on-one conversations with students, even going beyond the student advisory, I think there are some kids that don't necessarily feel comfortable speaking up, and I think having the one-on-one would be really important step to understand some of what you're trying to get at in the culture here at the school.
Thank you, Ness.
Yeah, and I just echo that quickly, you know, as well, thank you for all your work on this, and it feels like you've been here for a long time already, and I'm really glad now that you're just here and fully able to focus on Hingham and really excited to work with you, so thank you for everything.
That's a great one. We are through your, helping out with the strategic plan, I think that was, I'm sure, very helpful for you as well. And then, just to add on to Tim's statement about with the students, and also, I'm sure the public will appreciate that when you meet with the stakeholders, including the parents.
Yeah, I'll repeat what everyone else said, I agree with everything, this is great, I love the way it's laid out, very easy to read and understand. Yeah, and I think it also dovetails really nicely with the draft strategic plan that we're working on, so it's really great timing, so thank you.
Thank you. What else do you have for us?
So in the packet, in your materials, there also was a memo from Andy Hui, did I say the name right?
Hoy.
Hoy, sorry, Andy Hoy, on two grants that we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We're grateful to Andy for applying for these. There's the civics teaching and learning grants. One is exclusively for Hingham and will allow for the purchase of a curriculum called Cornerstones from Primary Source that allows our grades three to five students to dig into primary source documents and develop inquiry skills that not only further social studies content, but also further problem-solving and close reading of texts and deep analytical thinking. So we're grateful for that grant that he wrote. In addition, he wrote a grant in collaboration with neighboring South Shore districts, and you had a list in the packet of those districts that will allow our grades eight to 12 teachers to participate in professional development with the Democratic Knowledge Project, which is a highly respected organization in the state that's been providing professional development on civic education for secondary students. So we're grateful and working on the details of what that professional development will look like, and we're grateful for the opportunity to partner with neighboring districts because we can, it's an opportunity for us to learn what's happening in other districts, as well as to benefit and provide professional development for our teachers, which ultimately impacts our students' achievement. Second in the packet was a, third was a timeline for, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, our policy requires us to vote on grants, so are we going to do that? I mean, I think it, I think it sounds great, so.
It does, and, is it on here? I don't, it's, oh, it is on here, yes, sorry. Yes, we are going to vote on it, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sorry.
You also, in your timeline is a timeline for the MECO director hiring. We'll let the school committee know as we progress into the forums and invite perhaps the committee to the forums with families to meet our finalists. We are grateful to Carol Perez for her service to the Hingham Public Schools and wish her very well in her endeavors, in her next steps in her career. She contributed greatly to the development of our MECO program and she will be missed, but are actively working to seek a candidate to continue to be the leader of our MECO program. And lastly, just to honor, you have a list of personnel update to first honor our retirements. We are grateful, I was going to take out the calculator and add the years of service, they are extremely impressive, the amount of service that these educators have given, both to education of young people and also to the Hingham Public Schools, recognizing Alyssa Valley, who served 15 years, Tina Wenner, who served 21 years, Sue McHugh, 17 years, Maynard Moran, 23 years, Cheryl Reposa, 26 years, Jane D. Alessandro, 35 years, grateful, Beverly Vernon, 20 years, Rebecca Case, 25 years, Jennifer Henrickson, 26 years, Marybeth Robinson, 27 years, Audrey Knight, 21 years, and Linda Kelly, three years in Hingham and 17 overall. And you can also imagine if we added those years and then multiplied them by the number of students that they've interacted, we would be, it would be an astronomical amount, so we're grateful for their service to Hingham as well.
Thank you. Although those names are, making me sad, but a lot of those names are, definitely had an impact on my children's lives, that's amazing. And also just a quick note on the civics grant, that is amazing news, and you know, those grants are highly competitive, and I think it's a testament to our social studies and history departments in Hingham that this was awarded to us. We have some stellar staff in those areas, and I think maybe last year's History Teacher of the Year Award helped us get over the finish, oh, she happens to be here tonight, Ms. Chrissy O'Connor. Just like to throw that out whenever we can, but I'm sure, I'm sure that did not hurt in our grant application process, so thank you.
And if I can just add, as my other life as a social studies teacher, I've gone to numerous professional development seminars and by Primary Source, and I think that that organization does the best professional development I've had as a teacher, content specific, but, and so I'm really happy to see Hingham getting more involved with Primary Source.
Is that it for your update, Dr. Anderson? All right, item five is communications, and, sorry, well, I'm so sorry, because I, apologize, sorry, everyone, this is going to be my fault, but I don't see to act as appropriate. Oh, it doesn't? No, I'm sorry, I thought you said it did. Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. All right, so does someone want to make a motion to accept the grant?
I will make a motion to accept the two civics teaching and learning grants in the amount total of $34,680.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
All right, thanks, unanimous, great, thank you. All right, now moving on to communications. So first one is communications received by the superintendent. I have that, you have that, all right. Other communications from anyone on the committee? I did have one, just to bring to folks' attention, a community member from Foster School had reached out and I had made Dr. Adams aware about some traffic issues on Planters Road, and they are taking some suggestions to the traffic committee, meeting with the traffic committee to try to come up with some better traffic enforcement in that area. So I'll keep folks posted on that. Item six is unfinished business, and number, the one item on that, 6.1, is to hear the strategic plan presentation and act as appropriate.
So it's been a long time since you heard the strategic plan, so we're going to give a quick run-through, and hopefully it's less than 10 minutes, maybe even a little less. I want to recognize some of the folks that are here tonight, I'm grateful that they came, as well as grateful for the many hours we spent, I believe, in this room, and some, it got a little hot some of those evenings, for three hours at a time. We have Chrissy O'Connor, who's here. We have June Gustafson, thank you for being here, Joanne Ballis, who's here too. We have our school committee members who were there, Carrie Nie, Ness Corenti, and Ally Anderson, as well as, oh, and those are the members that are here. Oh, and Katie Roberts.
And Anne Matthews.
Anne Matthews, you did snuck in late. Thank you for your participation and giving your voice and contributing your voice to this plan. So just, we're going to just run through it a little bit, so that kind of jogs your memory and sort of help you also see how it sort of fits in with our work so far and how we can see it as a vision moving forward. Katie Roberts, also part of the strategic planning, is also in her new role as interim assistant superintendent, is going to also help me with a portion of this. So the vision, one way of thinking of the vision is sort of as our compass, this is our aspirational kind of view of what we want for our children, what we'd like to achieve in the long term. One of the activities the leadership team did was sort of think about our own reasons for becoming educators, our own experiences, both as educators, in parents, and as students. And we then took the vision, the mission, and the core values and said, do you see yourself represented here? Is this what you dream also for your own young people that you have in your classrooms and your own young people that you have at home that you're raising? We could absolutely see ourselves. We want lifelong learners that are going on this journey, and that powerful word of embarking, right? We want them to begin their journey with us and continue that into their futures, and really wanting also to raise young people with empathy and confidence for what the world has ahead for them. In addition, our mission for the strategic planning group, the word "together" was really important. Given the last two and a half years that we've had, we really wanted to emphasize that it was about collective effort, all of us together, working towards a mission and vision and strategic objectives. Another word people found very important was cultivate, and really found that really powerful. We want to grow a learning environment that empowers every single one of our students to contribute to the world ahead of them, and that was also important. Innovative and equitable and inclusive, and all of us could see ourselves, some way, represented here in the goals we have for our students. Core values, again, this centers our work as we move forward, not only in our strategic planning, but also in all of the documents and all our goal-setting that we'll be doing, and all of our individual work as well as collective work. It's really how we engage with each other and how we go about our work, how we ask our young people to go about the learning that happens in our schools, how we as a leadership team are working together, and how we support our educators. And so it's how we are working together and moving forward. So this sort of centers us, as well as the vision and the mission. This is the spokes that you've heard a lot about and what the final kind of version will look like, but if you start with number one at the top, culture of collaboration and community, we need to sustain and develop and strengthen, the two and a half, last two and a half years have been hard for all of us, is really come together as a community around a common vision and mission about supporting our young people and their families. Second, our core work is around teaching and learning and being innovative and supporting our classrooms. And third, we really want to develop a healthy, equitable, inclusive learning environment where we really work on the sense of belonging of all of us to contribute to the schools and the learning communities we belong to. Our schools also need capital and finance resources in order to do well, our teachers as well. We need to also sustain and develop and recruit our staff, a diverse staff that's able to lead us as well.
Thanks, Dr. Adams. And I too would like to echo thank you to the committee, it was a terrific group, a lot of energy and some great ideas from a variety of sources. So our first spoke on the wheel, as Dr. Adams mentioned, is a culture of collaboration and community, and this really is our first step in advancing our aspirational vision of Hingham together. There's a need for clear, concise, consistent, comprehensive communication, and this will be accomplished through, first of all, planning, developing a strategy and a plan for communication.
developing a strategy and a plan for communication. And that work is underway of developing clear and consistent formatting, scheduling, and such for our communications. Another key aspect of this is alignment of our documents and communication and making sure that they're internally consistent. So are our policies lived in our procedures and are they lived in our actions? And finally, we'll be working really on those transition years where there's a lot of anxiety from families when students are going from pre-K to K, from grade five to six, and from eight to nine, to make sure that those families are feeling that they have received all of the information that they need about the next stage of their student's journey. Step two here, I promised Margaret 60 seconds, and so I will try to hold to that. But obviously, this is the core of our work, culturally responsive teaching and learning. And one thing to note about the strategic plan is that these spokes were significantly edited. And so I would say a more accurate title for this spoke would be "data-driven, equitable, inclusive, universally designed, culturally responsive, rigorous, relevant, and innovative teaching and learning." It didn't fit on the spoke, but that is what it should say. And to that end, I would say really the core of our work this year will be re-centering on instructional practices. It has been a long time since instructional practices have been our primary focus. And again, really focusing in on those best practices. And so what that will look like is that we will be really looking at our data protocols and some of the tools that we're using. We'll be working to strengthen our tiered system of supports in the academic side. We'll be offering professional development on universal design for learning and culturally responsive pedagogies. We will also, in addition to looking at instruction, we will be taking a close eye at curriculum. And for that, we will be looking at our processes for reviewing curriculum. We will be looking at our adoption cycles. And as part of that, you will be seeing in the next few years some new curriculum that is in the work. So we have work already underway on our new elementary reading program that will be aligned to current best practices and reading instruction. We have other projects in the works, such as a new middle school science curriculum that's phenomenon-based and universally designed. And we have a variety of curriculum projects going on in math, social studies, world language. And of course, I wanted to acknowledge our new fine arts director, Joanne Ballis. And there'll be some great work going on in curriculum in the arts as well. And then finally, NIOSC has a new requirement as part of our NIOSC accreditation process. And that is to go through a visiting process with regard to portraits of a graduate. And I say portraits because we'll be looking at all of the future paths of our students. And that's a multi-year process that you will be hearing much more about. And then finally, our third spoke on healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. We go back to that vision statement. This is really where the flourishing part of the vision statement comes in, creating those healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. So in addition to the academic tiered systems of support that I mentioned under spoke two, we'll also be paying close attention to the SEL side of those tiered systems of support, making sure that we're responding to the social emotional needs of all students. I would include that also, all staff, that we do need to attend to the social emotional needs of staff as well. A second kind of big theme of this spoke three is around students feeling safe and supported. And under that bucket, I would include our attention to our bullying prevention plan, making sure that it's not only updated, but also lived, that we're living that prevention plan. We'll also be revisiting and refining our procedures for reporting incidences of bias. And then finally, there will be much work that is already underway and more work to be done, you're never done, with looking at the equitable and inclusive part of our curriculum. And so to that end, we will be conducting an equity audit of our curriculum. We'll be partnering with some external partners on that. And there'll be also professional development around that as well.
Fourth spoke was around capital and finance, ensuring that our schools are safe and we're educating in modern facilities, and that our students and staff have adequate resources. One is continuing to support the foster building project as it moves forward, looking at benchmarks for appropriate per pupil expenditures as we look at budgeting, developing a technology plan, so we have a clear plan to how we address infrastructure as well as our use of instructional technology, and continuing to do facilities and capital planning. Fifth, human resources and leadership, really focused on developing the people, really developing and recruiting and empowering our staff. Recruiting and retaining, designing a mentoring program and strengthening that program to develop internal leadership programs for aspiring leaders. Looking for opportunities for collaboration and time within our school day to support PLCs in our schools, as well as continuing recruitment. That's it. Couple of other comments. One of the things I would intend to do is come back to the school committee at least three times during the school year to provide an update on the plan and how we're doing towards it. I think trimesterly would be probably the best approach to sort of give you an update to tell you our progress. As well as at the end of the year, probably around this time, working with the leadership team and other groups to revise and edit and update, right, the plan so that this continues to be a living document. I'd ask the committee tonight to approve it, to give us a path forward. It is the best thinking of a group of very dedicated stakeholders who spend some time to work on a plan to help move us forward. And I think we could all, as the leadership team worked on it last week for three days, we could all see ourselves represented here. We could see our schools, our own professional and student learning goals. We could see our departments here reflected. So it's a path forward for us. And know that it's a document that needs to be lived. And as it is lived, it is edited and revised moving forward. But we ask that you approve it so that we can start to get to work on it and help plan how we can share this with our educators and our families. So remember, in that mission was that word "together." It is not our leaders alone. It is all of us working together that can make this come alive, which means we have to enlist folks in this journey with us. So we ask that you take that step tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. This was a great presentation, very dynamic. I think very insightful. And not only do I see and hear the excitement for this, I think I heard a lot more, I think just in the way it was presented, about how all of these spokes impact students and learning, right? Which is clearly the focus of what everyone in this room is doing this work for. So I appreciate that that really came through in the presentation that you all put together. So thank you for that. And I'd like to thank all the folks, both the committee that worked on this, as well as all the community members and stakeholders who participated in it. I think last time we heard a little bit of criticism that there wasn't a lot of engagement, but I think there was actually a very fair amount of engagement. For, I mean, I know it's a town of 25-plus thousand people, but not all 25,000 people have an interest, an invested interest in the schools. Wish we all did, but not everyone does. But I think this document really is a community document, as John Ferris called it. And I don't know, something about the way it was presented tonight in this deck to me sort of really brought it all home and how it impacts on it. So, dim.
Yeah, just, I mean, so piggybacking on what Michelle was saying, that I think that, I hope hearing the presentation and really seeing the documents, which I'm sure are available, you see that really academic excellence is the spine running throughout it. And everything goes back to academic excellence for all kids, for all learners. So I hope people really can dive into it and get that out of it. So just wanted to highlight that.
Tonight, and I want to comment on how I really caring about the work we want to do and that transitions from the elementary to middle, middle to high. And then you're working on those instructional practices. That's going to be very helpful with the academic excellence. And then I think it'll be really great for the committee to be able, for you to come back to us three times a year. I think that's going to be very helpful. And I also liked hearing about that is a living, like a living document.
Yeah.
I think that's, I don't think we heard that last time, and I really appreciate that.
I agree. I think we had heard today. Prior to this meeting, the school committee underwent some orientation and a refresher from the Mass Association of School Committees. And strategic plans came up, and they're like, a lot of district duties. And they print them, and then it sits on a shelf for five years. So this is clearly not what's happening with this document. And that's great to hear. And again, I appreciate too, the three times a year updates.
I think Ms. Eastwood, who's sitting in the audience, could attest that this is not a document that's going to live on a shelf. It's going to be a living document that we try to move forward in our communities.
Two questions and one comment. So the first question is, it looks like a couple of strategic initiatives fell off from last presentation to this one, from capital and finance, so five and six. I think it was like fully, I'm wondering if that was intentional. It was a fully funded kindergarten program and investigate alternative programming options. Everything else was the same. It could just be a presentation thing versus...
Yeah, we made some choices to sort of collapse it a bit. It was not to delete those from the original documents.
Okay, cool.
But thank you for pointing that out because I can see how that might be a misunderstanding for folks. It was not intentional.
Second, thank you. Second question. In the first presentation, there was this outcome, timeline, responsibility. Would you view that initial draft as an initial draft? And that would be something that you'd come back with in that first update? Or would that piece maybe be able to be provided as an update earlier on? Because I do think it's important to understand, what should we be expecting year one versus year two versus year three, understanding things will change?
Yeah, I think you sometimes, that's why it's a living document. There'll be things that we accomplish really quickly. And there'll be things that will take us longer, and we may not accomplish in three years because there are barriers that get in our way. So we are going to try to adhere to that timeline. We'll move as fast as we can. But at times, we'll know that there are barriers, there are stressors, both on the humans in the organization, but also, you know, financial and other stressors that come in our way. So you have to think about it as dynamic. There are some things we might move up and do immediately. I think you'll find when we come in a couple of months and say, this is what we've been able to accomplish so far, you'll get a sense that, oh, we're moving more towards completing and making progress towards these. There may be some after three years we're not able to accomplish, or we've only accomplished to some extent. So they'll still continue to be in progress moving forward. So I'm confident you'll have a sense as we move through the year about our progress towards these. And then at this time next year, we'll be able to say, these are the things we've accomplished, and these are the things we feel as a leadership team with our school communities that we want to continue to work on. So.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And then just the comment. So I definitely support this. And I know last time I quibbled with maybe some of the wording. My comment slash ask going forward would be, I think there are some initiatives that are very specific, and that makes sense. And that doesn't mean they're going to be easy to get after. But it's sort of easy to understand what's underneath that, or, you know, there isn't as much underneath it. There's others that are more broad. I talked last time about, you know, why isn't learning loss, you know, why isn't the word "learning loss" there? And I think I understand why it's not there, why is special education not there? So I think for those initiatives that are more broad, I guess I would ask, early on, to try and bring more specificity to what we're getting after. I think some of that would be in the outcome, but I think that will be important going forward.
Yeah, I think when you'll see our updates, I think you'll see how we're addressing and moving forward on that. So I'm confident you'll get a better picture of how we're moving forward on those that are broader.
Thank you.
Ness or Ally, anything to add? Ally?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Ally, you also?
Okay.
Well, I just want to say quickly that I'm so excited to see where this plan has gone from where it was left off with the strategic planning committee because I can already see it becoming much more tactical and taking state. So it's really exciting. I love the fact that you're going to plan to present to us three times a year. And one of the words you have used a lot is "together" and how do we communicate to the teachers and the faculty, but also then to the community? And so could you just talk a little bit more about, obviously, the public can attend the school committee meetings to hear the updates. But there had been mention of a dashboard. Is that still in the works? Or will there be other places the community can be part of the process?
Yeah, so one of the things we'll need to do is share and start to do some sharing of this plan in a broader way and look for, and we'll enlist our school leadership team in doing that and sharing it with their PTOs, engaging different parent and community groups, as well as, as we go back to school, really engaging our educators. Our educators are key also in this work. You'll see in the strategic plan that hashtag "Hingham Together", and we're going to try to leverage that hashtag to really get a sense of how do we come back as a community and move forward and help with the healing process that we need, given the past last two and a half years, and acknowledge the struggle that we've all had, either in classrooms, at the leadership level, or as parents with our own children. But also a hopeful theme of how we are moving forward as a community. So we'll need to do that enlisting of all of our stakeholders around that work. And as others have said this evening, as our students, right? Engaging our young people in this work because their vision, they have a lot to contribute to making this vision and mission a reality as well. I think that answered that question, Ally. Is that correct?
Yeah, it did. This is great. I'm really excited to see it come to life.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, very exciting. And I think that Hingham Together is just such a great tagline, slogan, whatever you want to call it. Because I think in the year that's coming up, in the next two years that are coming up, not only is that what the schools need, but it's what our broader community needs as well as we move towards the good capital reinvestments that we have and budget and, you know, rightsizing budgets for all town departments. So I think that is just the exact wording that we're looking for right now, Hingham Together. Well, thank you again. With that, I would accept a motion to approve the strategic plan.
I will make a motion to accept the strategic plan as presented by Dr. Margaret Adams. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything, Ally and Ness?
Aye.
All right. That is unanimously approved. Thank you, everyone, so much for all the work on that. All right. With that, we will move to new business. Item 7.1 was to review school handbooks and act as appropriate. We are actually going to table this item until our next meeting, which I won't spoiler alert because we have that as one of the agenda items to discuss our calendar. But we'll do that at the next meeting of the committee. There were just some, there were just some things that still need to be tied in with the updated policies that we have. So I think Dr. Adams is going to work with the principals and the policy subcommittee, and then they'll come back and make a recommendation for the handbooks to the full committee. All right. So then that leads us to 7.2, to hear a proposal for food service fees for fiscal year '23 and act as appropriate. So you, Anisha?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So in your packets, you would have seen a proposal where we're asking the school committee to be fiscally responsible and increase the price of meals for the different schools based on the cost and the recommended prices that we have listed out here. We know that the governor general may be making each, at least one breakfast and at least one meal per day, two meals, one meal per day. Well, maybe two if there's a breakfast and lunch. There may be a possibility of those being free this year. But in some cases, our students may have second meals, or there may be other meals that they may have in terms of, whether it be from additional salads or other meals that they may pick up. And we just want to make sure that those prices are... And we just want to make sure that those prices are created and approved before with the start of school, please.
Thank you for putting this chart together. This is really helpful to see it laid out like this. As folks on the committee who are looking at the packet can see, the food and packaging costs are just going up and up. And we're trying, and I think what we're trying to do is not shock the system by increasing the rates too much. But do folks have questions, Ms. Kim?
I'm totally in support of this in the general sense. I've got a water issue. I'm looking at, I mean, both the environmental and, you know, just the idea of charging students for water. I'm wondering, I mean, I was kind of hoping Kim would be here to answer this, but I'm wondering if there's a way to, I mean, I would support doubling the price of bottled water if we could provide an earn for free water for kids at a mealtime. I just feel like charging for water that's, should be a free resource and is a free resource available in the schools seems odd and especially with the environmental impact of these bottles of water.
Right.
Yeah.
So we do, we do within the schools in terms of that, but one of the reasons here as well is twofold. Firstly, in terms of, I guess, applying a price to it because of the environmental impact one. And then secondly, also you'd notice that the price of milk is actually cheaper to try to, even if water is healthy, to encourage kids to also drink milk as well as another alternative because of the protein and other, you know, healthy parts of drinking milk. So that's where she has, we've definitely spoke about that. And that was her thinking in terms of those recommended prices.
I know they have water stations around school, but there aren't, I mean, an urn with cups would be easily available for the lunchroom, I think would be easy to provide because kids might not have their own water bottles or receptacles to drink it out of. Just.
I think it depends on the age of water cups. Young, young kids, even some middle schoolers can, you know, those, you can just imagine what would happen with those cups in a cafeteria. So we, I'd want to work with the principals to sort of think about how we might encourage kids to bring bottles and use those water filling stations instead of. I, I would imagine those doing lunch duty, both at the middle school and at elementary would say the cups might not last very long.
You're of course correct, Pat. But it'd be, it'd be great if we could think about a way to move beyond the plastic bottles of water.
Tim, I know there are several groups in town who are also thinking about and discussing this, but, but one of the challenges that has come up and hopefully will no longer be a challenge in two years is foster school, that they need to have the bottled water. They can't have kids drinking from soda water.
Yeah, of course.
So that, so obviously that's a different scenario, but it has come up and is being discussed in several other places.
Awesome. Thank you, Ally.
I was just going to think with the question that I, you know, I remember we were receiving letters from students. A lot of them mentioned, you know, reducing the water bottle and they, and some of the kids had a lot of innovative ideas and it would be great if the kids could be involved in something like that, particularly maybe, I think it was the middle school students that we heard from.
Yes. There's some good research that the one way to get folks to recycle is doing some of these pieces, but it's also education. Is how do we, how do we get kids involved in educating other kids about, hey, this, this, you know, get a water bottle instead and bring it and reuse it and fill it up instead of buying that water bottle. So how do we educate kids?
And then I just, one other thing, I just wanted if Ayesha could just, I just want to mention to the public that you had written on a memo that it's been eight years since the last.
It has been eight years. And another thing I wanted to mention as well is that in terms of any, any kid who is not able to afford a lunch or breakfast, there are, there are situations within our schools like that. And we do have, we do have ways and means of making sure that those students are fed. So if there are any concerns in terms of that part of things, we do make sure that that is a need that's met.
In a way that's not stigmatized into child and private.
Exactly, definitely.
But most of, these are mostly ally card items, would you say?
Yes, yes. And then the breakfast and lunch and the deli would be the general, if some of the kids, I know like even my kids as well, sometimes they'll go for two servings. So if it does happen to be free, the first one will be free, but the second one they'd have to pay for.
Plus, the big news is we're offering free lunches now.
Yes.
Step by for a month.
That's where all your money's going to go.
All right, so just looking at this.
And I believe that they already said that the state, we are already, they are offering free lunch for next year. That's already been determined, correct?
I wondered if the.
I feel like I read it like two weeks ago.
I wonder if it has to be signed by the governor or where it is established, but it's.
So the House and I think and the Senate have signed, it's just the governor.
And whether it's part of the budget, but.
And just to clarify from, for folks watching or watching this after, so the price increases, every item is not increasing, but they range from 25 cents to 75 cents.
That's right.
Is the biggest increase on any of these. So we're trying to do this, again, not shock the system.
Definitely.
Double prices or anything. So we're ranging from zero increase to 75 cents maximum.
And Kim has said that with this increase, she doesn't anticipate unless inflation continues to like really grow. She doesn't, she doesn't anticipate an increase probably in the next couple of years for sure, based on this new approved pricing range that you recommend, if you do approve it tonight, yes.
Yeah. Sorry, just out of it. And this is only for the students because I'm, it's not for staff.
Not for staff. Staff was approved the last time, so it does not include staff.
You weren't adding onto that as well.
Yes. Okay.
Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Sure, I can make a motion. All right. I will make a motion to approve the proposed rate increase for food services. Item's not covered by the current pre-state school mail plan, if approved by the state.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Just in terms of the wording of the motion, the price does increase for the meals. It just doesn't apply next year because the government is potentially paying for it. I don't know if that exception needs to be in the motion.
And you're just above the first meal, yeah?
Yeah, so somebody buys a second meal.
Oh, I'm, okay.
Yeah.
I apologize, sorry. The motion stands.
Any other, that's my line. Any other, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ness? And Ally?
Aye.
All right, that also caused a message. Thank you, Ayesha. And will this be updated on the website or communicated to families?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So folks can.
Move forward with that right away. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, as hinted to, the next item is 7.3, to review a draft calendar of 2022, '23 school committee meeting and to adopt these if these work for folks. So, sorry, I didn't put this in calendar format. But I was suggesting we maintain our 7:00 PM start time for our regular meetings, which would be held generally two times a month on the second and fourth Monday of each month. So that would be, you can see the dates, the 12th and the 26th of September. October 11th, we would meet on Tuesday as that Monday is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then again, on the 24th, two meetings in November. One is the Monday after Thanksgiving, but I think that should be okay. The month of December, we'll just have, knock wood, one meeting on December 12th because we can rest up for budget season, which will begin in January. So we'd have our regular meeting, January 9th and 23rd, and then budget meetings each Thursday in January, beginning January 5th, with a potential meeting February 1st if it's needed. I was proposing to start those meetings at 6:00 PM. If that works for folks, because those can go a little bit late and, yep.
So the other thing with that is February 1st is a Wednesday, so.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That should be February 2nd. If that's a Thursday.
Yep.
Town meeting on November 1st. Put that on there?
Oh, for the special town meeting, yes. So that will be, we'll add, we'll need, we'll, we'll convene a meeting on November 1st, right before the special town meeting. And then February will be the 13th and 27th, March will be the 13th and 27th. It would be the 10th and 24th, which I think should be likely date for the April town meeting. And then May 8th and 22nd, and then June 12th and 26th. Any conflicts for the majority of people in any of those dates?
Do we want to have July and August done?
I didn't know if we did want to or not, or if we.
We usually do, so that, we don't, we don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, we can. So I'll just, we could propose this second and fourth of July and the second and fourth weekends, sorry, the second and fourth Monday of July and the second and fourth Mondays in August as tentative summer meeting dates.
It'd be the 10th and the 24th of July.
Okay.
Be 14th and 28th of August.
Good, okay, yeah. So yes, we could put those in there. And then we also, if we can, think about, we usually have two Saturday meetings. One, a workshop for the committee to get together with leadership as well, sorry, for the weekend work. But to go over our goals, like our school committee goals for the year. And then we would have another Saturday, I guess it could be a Sunday too. We've done them on Sundays. But a weekend meeting with the advisory committee, usually select board, just to go over budget processing. What are we thinking, you know, timeline, timelines, level services, what we're looking for. So that's, those are, both of those are usually about four hours. It'd be a little less for the budget workshop, but the plan would be about four hours. Have you heard from anyone on the advisory or select board about a meeting, about that budget meeting on the weekend?
No.
Okay.
No, lots of other meetings, but not that.
I know, okay. Someone had mentioned that there was one that they saw a draft schedule for October 8th, but that feels a little late, maybe for the budget. So.
I know tomorrow we need to just show them faster.
Yep, okay. So do we want to, I'm sorry, I opened my phone up. How about, sorry, two back-to-back weekends in September? Or do you want a break in between? So I'm thinking, I would think maybe that last weekend in September to meet with AdCom, if that works for them. And then another meeting for us. On another Saturday in September. Okay. And that's probably okay because that's the first week of school and.
Please don't do it that way.
So we will not do it on, we will not do it on a Saturday of the first week of school.
Yeah, so early October.
The last two Saturdays of September? How about the last Saturday of September?
Yes, all right.
And then take a week off.
Yep.
And is that, that would be Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend?
Yep, so we don't want to do it that way.
October 1st is a Saturday. It's the last Saturday, it's the week before the end of the month.
First.
Okay.
We skip a week and then did the following week. Would that work?
So what's the, sorry, what's the, what's, oh, what's two Saturdays before the 20th? Is that the 10th?
Week is the 23rd, no, sorry, the 24th and October 1st? Oh, no, that's, that's a break, sorry.
I do need to, we need to talk to AdCom too about dates. No, we do not. So let's. Yeah, because I need to know their thing. I was just going to throw that one out there. So let's, let's see if the, if these dates work with the inclusion of the July and August meetings as well as the November 1st town meeting and, and then we can circle back on the, yes.
Just to rewind to August 2022, did we cancel the August 8th meeting? I didn't realize.
If you.
I think it was originally on a schedule that we'd have a meeting on August 8th.
Yes, it was. And sorry, I should have put the August meeting in here. Yes, so I was going, if, if folks want, I was going to say the next meeting should, we could do August 22nd.
Okay.
On August 8th unless something has come up.
Does that give us enough time with the manuals?
We will, we are going to need that week at least. I think August 22nd is.
Yeah, so they need that, we need that much time really, even if we had a meeting.
I wasn't asking if it had to be that. I was asking, do we, don't we need a meeting before then?
I think August 22nd is our best bet.
Perfect.
Yeah. But thank you for reminding me, yes. So we would, could eliminate the August 8th meeting. And so our next meeting would be the 22nd of August and then September, back to our normal every other Monday. All right. And is that, is that good with them? Okay. We need a motion to, I don't think we, all right. So, all right, so Sherri, I'll work with you to just set that up in the calendar. Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, item 7.4 is reviewing a homeschooling application that Dr. Adams, I believe, recommends.
Yes, so I reviewed the application and met the requirements of both curriculum and assessment and asked that you approve it this evening.
Any questions?
I will make a motion to receive the homeschool application for the student in grade three for the school year September 22 through June 23, as recommended by the superintendent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Ally? All right, that's, thank you. All right, that is approved as well. Thank you. Item 7.5 is to discuss a signatory designee for forms relating to building projects at Foster and Plymouth River School and act as appropriate. In addition to all of Dr. Adams's other duties that she has, who are also undergoing two major capital projects right now, that oftentimes may require sign off from the school committee or if designated, the superintendent to, for, it could be for a variety of things. So the thought was to designate the authority rather than having the school committee do it because we'd have to convene a meeting, discuss it and then do it. And sometimes these are time-sensitive documents. So the thought was to, if folks were comfortable with that, designating Dr. Adams as the signatory for forms related to Foster and Plymouth River School.
Can I add just when she does that she should communicate what she signed to the chair?
Sure. Yep, okay.
I think most are going through the building committee and shell is on.
And I know that, yes. So, yeah, so I will. And then I can report back to folks. Yeah, good point though. All right. Want to make a motion?
I am making a motion.
Yes.
To find Dr. Adams as a signatory designee for forms related to the building projects at Foster and Plymouth River.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Ally?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, item 7.6 is to review a declaration of surplus and act as appropriate. Think that, Ayesha, do you have that?
So we received a list of textbooks, both in the science and social, science and social studies departments that are no longer in use and designated as surplus items. I just wanted you to get your approval so we can try to dispose them in the most beneficial way to Hingham Public Schools.
Do you have a motion? Any questions, Ms. Kim? Nope, all right.
I will make a motion to declare the science books as detailed in item 7.6 as surplus and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of the books at the least cost to Hingham.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And then the social studies as well. I will make a motion to declare the social studies books as detailed in item 7.6 as surplus and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of the books at the least cost to Hingham.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye. Aye.
See, I tricked him. I went Ness first that time. I'm switching it up over there. I think you guys are awake. Exactly. All right, it's with the, just those two, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Number eight, subcommittee and project reports. I'll start with our Zoom participants. Ally, do you have any subcommittee or project reports?
I do. The Hingham Arts Alliance is having a meeting with Joanne Dallas. I don't know if she's still there, but. Yeah, so if anyone would like to come meet her, get to know her, ask questions, she'll be doing some quick comments. I don't know if she'll be doing, someone will be doing some quick comments. It is on the 14th of August from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And they are asking that you RSVP at info@hinghamartsalliance.org or you can reach out to me and I'll give you the information for the RSVP. And then all. And then also for the Climate Action Planning Committee, their next meeting is on the 3rd of August. They will be posting the agenda publicly with the Zoom link, it will be virtual, and they are well on their way working on the plan, and they did send out a stakeholder survey, which probably several people on the school committee received, I think Ness and Michelle, just asking for input with opportunities, challenges for the climate action plan and things that they would like the committee to think about as they're working on the plan. That's all on my end.
And can repeat the dates of our climate meeting?
Yes, it's on August 3rd.
Thank you, Ally. Ness, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing other than there are warrants in your packet.
All right, thank you. Matt, anything?
Nothing, no, we have not met with each school.
Tim?
Awesome, I have a few things. The Human Rights Commission met for the first time on June 29th. It was really exciting to get that going after so long talking about it, kind of working to establish the mission and establish some protocols for how we're meeting. Our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday of this week, the 27th. We're going to be, try to, try to meet on the fourth Wednesday of every month, which will be great during, oh, no, that's, those are Thursdays, perfect. There's, with CPAC, they had an election, there's a new board, so they have three co-chairs, I won't go through the entire board, but the three co-chairs of CPAC for this coming year will be Rebecca Silva, Emily Cosman, and Heather Chisholm. So a great group to, Rebecca and Emily were on it last, were the board members last year as well. So it's a great group. CPAC is the Special Education Parents Advisory Council, just for people who don't know, if anyone has special ed, students in special ed, they're a great group to check out. And the, there was also some talk in the last couple of meetings, we were talking about the committee structure, the subcommittee structures, about combining the special education subcommittee and the curriculum subcommittee. We were talking with more conversation with Michelle and Dr. Adams. We said, and with communication from CPAC saying that that's not something that people would be looking for right now. These committees are going to stay the same with a special ed subcommittee, which is up and running. We will be meeting during, probably hopefully early September. And the curriculum committee is being a new committee, we are still working on getting the bugs worked out and figuring out what it is. So what we know will tell you.
Thank you. Carrie?
I don't have anything.
Jen? Sorry. Or formal scribe?
Okay, so I have, just to report, well, on policies, our next policy, subcommittee meeting is going to be August 9th at 10:00 AM, and we're going to start working on the three policies that were in the wellness report, which is relations to parent boosters, field trips, and then interscholastic athletics. And we also will be looking at policy JH, which is students' absences and excuses. And do you want me to read the other policies that we're thinking about?
As they relate to the handbooks or just in general?
No.
I mean, no, it'll be on the agenda, right?
Okay, yeah. And then I also just want to mention that from the facilities master plan, we finished reviewing all five of the schools minus, we didn't dive into Foster, and that we reviewed, it was the HABIB report that we reviewed the documents from, and now we're waiting from a updated document from HABIB.
Table of contents. So now we just have to, some of the content also needed to be updated, so we're just waiting on that as well.
Yes, and hopefully we'll have that soon. I think the goal was to have it within the next few weeks, and then we will gather again with the committee, and then hopefully we'll have a, be able to do a presentation in September.
Thank you. All right, I have a couple of things. Metco update, excellent news from the State House, the Metco funding was increased this year by a million dollars, so that was excellent news from the legislator. Also, Dr. Adams and myself and Susan Damato met with Metco families to get some feedback on the qualities that they are looking for in the new Metco director. As Dr. Adams mentioned, that screening committee work has begun this week. Interviews are actually scheduled for this week. There'll be opportunity for Metco families to be involved in the interviewing process or the meeting with the candidates, so we're looking forward to moving ahead with that new, that replacement position. Plymouth River Window Project is running on time and on budget, as we love to hear. It will be substantially complete by August 26th, prior to students returning. There are some window shades, exterior doors and storefront doors, which are on order and are delayed, but they won't delay, there won't be any impact to the students being able to use the classrooms. So I think Dr. Adams reported that it is, it looks great. Yes. Foster, there's much activity to date there. Things are really getting going there. The site is now surveyed and staked as to where the new building will be. Hearings with the Conservation Committee and the Planning Board are scheduled for August and September. The Warren article for town to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer the fund for the new building has been written and submitted. Playground inspection report is completed, and assuming town meeting approves funding for the project, this will allow the significant portion of the existing playground equipment to be moved to the temporary playground. There's like two sort of large items that they won't be able to move over to the temporary playground, but Principal Shuffley has said that he can find ways to use more hardtop play space too as well, maybe make some more foursquare games, so definite focus on making sure recess and outdoor activities can resume, can continue during construction. There will be a few weeks that, just in between, most of this will happen in December, that we won't, the kids won't be able to have a lot of access to the playground space, but some of that will happen over the winter break, so the impact on the students should be relatively small. A communication went out today that there is scheduled site engineering work beginning on August 10th, and so just for people listening, the outdoor property at Foster School will be closed to the public from August 10th through September 5th, so that that work can be completed before school starts. That doesn't impact the acceleration program that's happening at Foster School, August 15th through August 25th, but the outside will not be available. And we are also working, the school building committee is working with Principal Shuffley to schedule information sessions with family, foster families about the project in September to give them timelines and, you know, show the pictures and just be very, we want to be very communicative about any impact that it's going to have on outdoor spaces, parking, whatnot. So there is a lot of work being done there. And then another note, the, myself, Ness, and Jen, Ayesha, and Dr. Adams met with the AdCom Executive Board as well as the new ACES member, Caitlin Kirk, on July 15th. It was just a very, about an hour, sort of meet and greet, make introductions, and just some sort of high-level thoughts around the budget work. It was really positive, and, you know, everyone recognizes the budget process is going to be very challenging this year, but I think we all walked away, you know, recognizing it's going to be a very collaborative and thoughtful process, so it was a good meeting. It was a very good meeting. I think that's it for me. So our next meeting is scheduled for August 27th, or sorry, August 22nd at 7:00 PM. The new teacher orientation will take place August 29th and 30th, and then, sorry, educators in the room, you might want to cover your ears, convocation is August 31st and September 1st. So those dates, mark on your calendars. With that? Oh, yeah, sorry, anything from anyone under 48 hours? Okay. Other than that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I gotta do them. Ally? Motion to adjourn, we're good. Ness?
Aye.
All right, the rest of us?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.